Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We'll begin as usual with our prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Please join me. Gracious Father, we ask that you be with us tonight as we deliberate the city's business. We thank you for our citizens. We thank you for all our city employees. Thank you for our public safety employees also, and keep them safe as they're out there. We ask you to be with us in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor, Councilman Fitzpatrick. Councilman Tibbs. Councilwoman Bench is excused. Mayor Protam O'Neil is absent. Councilman Chlorus. Councilwoman Moore. Councilwoman Balls. Councilman Clark. Mayor Browning.
Present.
We have seven members present and two absent, Mayor.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I'd like to remind the audience that during the council meeting to please remain quiet, refrain from speaking, cheering, booing, or rude or obnoxious behavior. And the next thing on my list is to remind you to turn off or silence your electronic devices. Thank you very much for sacrificing yourself just now and having that go off. So, good timing on that. And it's just a good reminder, not only for our audience, but you will catch the council members periodically forgetting to do that also. So, it's a good reminder for all of us. Okay, Madam Clerk, any announcements?
Yes, I do have a couple this evening, Mayor. The wastewater collection convenience station will be open this Saturday, June 13th, to city residents for disposal of items such as building materials. And also, I'd like to bring to your attention that we have revised ordinance that has been distributed. It's regarding Section 11023 and 11025, ordinance amendment introductions. The revisions pertain to the pistol length of 26 inches or less as defined by the penal code MCL 750.222. And Mayor, with that, it takes us to personal appearances.
Okay, if it's only you, personal appearances. Remind each of the speakers that you are limited to three minutes. Our clerk has a timer over here, and you'll hear that beep at the end of the three minutes. So, at the end of three minutes, please complete your sentence or your quick thought for that. Also, the purpose of personal appearances is to address city councils. Speakers shall not address their remarks to the council as a whole. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual council members, city staff, or the audience. Speakers may ask general questions about the topic of their presentation. Questions will be referred to city staff for appropriate follow-up. Speakers shall not ask questions of specific council members. The purpose of the city council members is to discuss city business and not to deal with individual personalities. Personal abusive attacks, slanderous, or profane remarks about any person shall not be permitted. Violation of these rules will be considered a breach of order for which the speaker's appearance will be terminated. Refusal to yield the floor will be considered a breach of peace and subject to violation or removal from the council chambers. Madam Clerk, our first personal appearance?
Yeah, our first personal appearance, Marian Lopez. She did call my office this afternoon and stated that she would not be able to attend.
Okay.
So, our first speaker will be John Milne.
Okay.
Good evening. John Milne, 508 West Remington. Good evening, council members, city staff, and guests. On the occasion of Memorial Day, I had reason to visit the Forest Lawn Cemetery to visit the gravesite of my grandparents, including my grandfather, who's a decorated WWII veteran. As I left the cemetery, I had a chance to go by the Forest Lawn Chapel and noted that for the second year in a row, it is in an advanced state of deterioration on the foundation wall on the south side of the building. This has existed for two years now and is in a state where it must be stabilized and some repair done to it to stop further deterioration. It's reached the point where wild animals are nesting, not near it, but in the walls, in the foundation of the chapel. I've spoken with Public Works Director Carwatt. He's aware of the problem, but in looking at the past two city budgets, the cemetery's operations budget has included no capital money whatsoever. I would consider this a request for an emergency appropriation to stabilize that building. Perhaps somewhere in the range of $3,000 to $5,000 would keep it from further deteriorating. And this does not address the long-term problems with that chapel. That's not what I'm here for this evening. I would like to point out one thing, though, that less than 20 years ago, that chapel was used for my grandmother's memorial service when she was interred at that cemetery, and it is now not able to be used by the public in its intended purpose. So, if you could work with city staff on this, as I said, the director's aware of the problem. That's not where the problem at the moment lies. And I think it would pay benefits to stabilize this building. It is considered, if not nationally, locally historic. It's over 100 years old, designed by the same gentleman who designed the previous courthouse, and is really the centerpiece of the entire cemetery. So, I would ask for some quick action on this. I will state that I will come back to council in September or contact Mr. Carwatt to see what progress is on it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brandon Hosbeck.
Good evening, council, and Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Manager. My name's Brandon Hosbeck, Vice President of the Saginaw Firefighters Union. Most of you know me. I'm pretty much a staple coming to these things. Tonight, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. Since the budget has been passed, I've had some conversations with some individuals, both in and out of City Hall, asking some questions regarding, well, you know, why didn't the firefighters' union prepare for this? Why didn't you guys know that once the SAFER grant expired, there was a good possibility you might not get another one? Well, the answer to that is that we were preparing for that. We did know that the SAFER grant was only a two-year Band-Aid. We have reapplied. We're hoping to get another one. But we understand that if we don't, the SAFER funding that we're currently using in this fiscal year will be gone. The issue that we've had, and the reason I've come before you at previous meetings, has nothing to do with the SAFER grant. It has to do with the general fund and the millage. The millage fund was increased for next fiscal year, $102,216. Two more positions were added to the millage. However, for the general fund, we saw a reduction of $406,408. So, that's a net loss of $304,192. That's where our issue lies, is we feel that that is in addition to the SAFER grant, which that's about $1.1 million a year that we're going to lose. And we're just worried that these additional dollar cuts on top of that are very significant to us. And if that money was maintained, there would be a very strong possibility that two, three, or four positions could be maintained, and an additional fire station could be maintained as well. We'd have three instead of the proposed two. Despite all this, you know, obviously, we all hope to get the SAFER grant. If we don't, we are currently talking with the city. We're trying to identify some savings and things that we can do. But, you know, the general fund cut is going to continue to be something that we do bring up. You know, we came under budget last year. It appears we're going to be under budget again this year. I believe we're right around 4% to 5% under budget with 22 days to go. And we just hope that that's rewarded. We've done some things to cut overtime. We reduced our vacation slots, and, you know, we hope that the things we've done to help the city, you know, will be considered in the event we do not receive another SAFER grant. Hopefully, you all feel comfortable enough talking to me. If you have any questions afterward, please get with me or give me a call.
Thank you very much. Very nice.
Our next speaker is William Gorges.
Certainly, certainly.
Wow, what an introduction. Good evening, Mayor Brown, council members, manager Morales, and staff. My name is Bill Gorges. I'm the President of Saginaw Area Fireworks and a citizen of Saginaw. We're only 26 days away from painting the sky of Saginaw with one of the greatest fireworks shows in the state of Michigan. Our fireworks show has been nationally recognized. Wolverine, the folks who put it on last year, really put us on the map. Not only did they put us on the map, but they also put us on the cover of their nationwide and worldwide catalog for fireworks distribution. So, the Saginaw fireworks were featured on their catalog worldwide this year. This year, we're expanding the fireworks. We are going to increase the size of the show by approximately 14%, which will increase not only the volume of the show, but also the length of the show. We plan on drawing about 100,000 people to the riverfront, and it should be a great event for not only the city of Saginaw, but for the citizens that come to view, whether they're from the local communities or far away. Wolverine promises to wow not only the board of the fireworks, but wow the citizens once again. A few facts about the fireworks. We're a wholly volunteer organization. We don't have any paid staff, and the fireworks are funded solely by contributions, whether it's from street corner collections, people collecting at the Tim Hortons. We park cars at the WKCQ and get donations there, and solicitation of donations from local businesses. We don't charge anyone to view the fireworks from any of the areas. So, unlike some of the other fireworks shows where the premium areas have a $5 or $10 per person charge, we don't charge anyone anything. And that's one of the things that's really important to the board and drawing people to the Saginaw fireworks. The fireworks is a labor of love, and it's not only love for the fireworks, but it's also a love for our city. One of your council members is also on our board, and he serves in the same capacity to help make it a great show for the citizens of Saginaw and for our community. Our upcoming fundraising events, we're going to be parking cars at KCQ for donations. We'll be doing a lot of street corner collections, and we're going to be continuing to solicit local businesses for donations. Online donations can be made at saginawareafireworks.com securely through PayPal. In conclusion, I'd like to thank the manager and staff. We've met with all the departments that are involved in making this happen with in-kind services, police, fire, public works, parks, water, sewer, streets, and we appreciate the level of cooperation and support we received from all the departments in preparation and in making this a great event and a safe event for the city of Saginaw. Thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you. I may be back in a couple of weeks to give you an update about some exciting things that we plan on bringing to the Fourth of July in Saginaw. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Patrice Bolware.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Browning, manager Morales, and attorney. To each and every one of the council members and everyone who's present on this evening, my name is Patrice Bolware. I am founder of Project Unify, where we began our journey in 2011, beautifying the Veterans' McKinney Park as well as the Unity Park. I am happy to stand before you this evening after four years of visiting the Buildings and Grounds Department for the Saginaw Public School. We have been donated school playground equipment, and I am excited about that. It's been a long journey, but it's finally coming to fruition. So, I'm just standing before you once again to ask that you would consider allowing the playground equipment to be placed on the Veterans' McKinney Park on behalf of the residents of the city of Saginaw. I'm sorry. I just want to thank everyone, the planning committee and the block grant committee. I want to thank everyone who has come out to help participate in our cleanup to make it what it is. It's beautiful now. A lot of work has been done, and it's a lot of work need to be done. I am happy to say that we had a scope, and we were able to get a gate. It looks very nice. I'm hoping, if you have not been by there yet, that you'll take time to go by. We did get the tables and grills out. Families are coming back out to the park, and that's one of our goals, you know, to just make it better and presentable, make it safe and clean, and beautify where it's a safe haven for everyone who choose to come to the parks. And I'm excited. And again, just please, we're asking that you consider putting those pieces of equipment on the parks that we have adopted. I want to thank you for your time and consideration. Oh, if I may, I still have a few minutes. I just want to also thank, let's see, Representative Stacy Urban Oates, Governor Rick Snyder, Lieutenant Governor Brian Corley, for recognizing the fruits of our selflessness and tireless service on behalf of the children and families of the city of Saginaw. And this was given, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kevin Seaman.
My name is Kevin Seaman. I live at 161 South Collie Drive. I'd like to address everybody with the news that we have a bunch of companies that are looking at coming to Saginaw. The first one is called Christian USA Clothing Company. The second one is called Fourth Lutheran National Bank. The third one is called Christian Accounting Firm. The fourth one is called White Knight Pension Company. The fifth one is Christian Law Firm. The sixth one is KMC Plastics, and the seventh one is Christian USA Harness Raceway, which was the old Saginaw Harness Raceway. We're looking at buying it, reopening it. All these companies will be intertwined with each other, and the racetrack will be sponsored by the Christian USA Clothing Company. It is a new company that is going to be set up in America, and all the product will be made in the USA. It's something that I personally worked on, as I do work for the government. I'm a critical thinker for the FBI, the CIA, the Pentagon, the United States Military. I come up with projects to try and create jobs in America and bring in tax revenue. And this is one that can be done here in Saginaw where I live. Most of the stuff that I do gets handed off and goes to other places. And even this project here is personally trying to be stolen by Governor Rick Snyder and some other people in Lansing because it's worth so much money. This will bring a lot of money to the area, and it will be funded through a revolving line of credit through the government, which I can get because of working for the government. And I've laid out a plan on where you borrow the revolving line of credit money, and how fast that you pay it back, and how the government makes a profit off the money. With all the jobs that are created, you pay federal income tax, state income tax, social security tax, the corporate match, or the government match, depending on, you know, what it is, and city income tax, which Saginaw qualifies for. And you lay out the plans on how long it'll take you to pay back, and the tax money that they generate is extra on top of the money that is borrowed. And that is where the government makes a profit off of things. There'll be quite a bit of manufacturing in the south, and it will come farther north throughout time because it's a 10-year plan. The thing that is different about this company, the Christian USA Clothing Company, is if you look at Walmart, Walmart produces everything in China and brings it back in. They just basically buy it from somebody else, and as they do, they keep on marking it up as it changes hands. By the time it gets to Walmart, it's been marked up three, possibly four times where this company is going to produce it and then have their own stores and sell it. And that's, so that's what's possibly going to be coming to the area. And I wish I had more time to talk to you about it.
That's right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Carolyn Clayton.
Good evening, Mayor and council, and everybody else in attendance. My name is Carolyn Clayton, and I'm here because in 2008, I entered a partnership with the Rehabilitation Block Grant Services Division, and I must say that it was a very unpleasant experience for me. The work began in 2009 in July, and after the work was completed, I continued to have complaints, which I brought back to the responsible parties that I had come in agreement with. One of the things I want you to know that I thought that I was coming into partnership with a trust-based relationship, one, trusting that they would do the work, and them trusting that I would pay them, in which I've kept my end of the bargain. So, to get into what my complaint is about, the nature of my complaint is, from the first offset of the project when it's completion, when it rains, rain comes into my house. So, they've come out several times to, I'll call it, put a Band-Aid on it. They told me several things that they called themselves fixing. I had a brick chimney. Now, I have the metal chimney. They first said that water was coming in through the metal chimney. Long story. Then, they said it was from my air conditioner. Long story. But now, my kitchen ceiling and my back room ceiling momentarily, it's going to be in my lap. So, I need direction on how I can continue to get help, you know, because I'm still paying this back. They're looking for me to continue to pay them back. So, I'm looking for them to put their end of the bargain back on the table. Two is, my other thing is, I have a house, an abandoned house, that I've made several complaints. I live 220 North Fifth. I didn't state where I live. If you pass my house, my roof is beautiful. The outside appearance looks very convincing, but if you come inside, you'll see the damages that I've acquired over the years. And it's been since 2009, so it's 2015. I thought the longevity of the roof was at least 20 years, not six years. But, long story again. But I also want to complain about the house that's next to me, 218 North Fifth. It's an ice source, a forest. Last year, I caught eight raccoons. I couldn't even sit in my backyard, and I still have raccoons in the neighborhood because whoever let the property go, I have a forest coming. So, I'm just here standing to get help and need direction as a single woman, trying to do the best in her community. And I thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Derek Morell. Derek Morell? Not with us. Then, let's try Trey Patterson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Mr. Manager. My name is Trey Patterson. I stay at 1809 South Niagara. I am here on behalf of Project Unify to ask for permission of placing the playground equipment at Veterans Memorial and Unity Park for the children yet again. And that, so, thank you for your time.
You betcha. Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight will be Debbie McConian.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. Council members should have a copy of this letter that was sent, excuse me, in front of you. This letter represents one of several that has been written to the Federal Emergency Management Agency in Washington, DC regarding the SAFER grant. There is a gentleman from the Covenant Neighborhood Association that originated this idea, Kim Northfeller, and said, "Why don't all the associations write letters supporting the passage of," not the passage, the renewal of this grant and show our commitment to the city of Saginaw?" Many associations did. At our last association meeting on May 27th, the Adams Boulevard, we had 54 residents sign the letter, and we did mail it to Brian Comoney, the Assistant Administrator Grant Programs Directorate in Washington, DC. It was a perfect timing. I was trying to decide if I was going to come tonight, and there all of a sudden Mayor Browning was on the news at noon and speaking about the SAFER grant and the things that would happen if the funding is not continued. Everyone knows we'll lose 13 firefighters, and two stations will close. That would be disastrous. We're hoping that we do get the funds, and we're hoping that there is a Plan B in effect if this isn't renewed. I'll actually be going to Washington for a family visit, and maybe I could stop by and chat with the gentleman and put in a good word for Saginaw. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mayor, that takes us to the remarks of council.
Okay, and reminder, the council members, we have a five-minute time limit, and tonight we begin with Councilman Tibbs.
I'd like to thank the fellows present today. Mr. Milne, thanks for appearing. Last time you were here, you gave us an educational proposal, one, and thank you again for bringing this issue in relationship to our cemeteries. We should expect a little level of standard for our cemeteries and parks, and I'm sure Mr. Carwatt will look into it and bring something to you, or at least to council. I think September is pretty reasonable as well. Mr. Gorges, I'm assuming that's how you pronounce your name. I'm sorry if that's not.
Gorges.
Gorges, okay. Well, you like Gorges, so I just repeat it. But I thank you for your efforts of fireworks. I have three children, two of very young age, and they look forward to the fireworks every year. They'll be very disappointed if there wasn't here. So, my family, thank you for your efforts. Mr. and Ms. Bolware and Mr. Patterson, thank you for your help with Project Unify. Every year, you have that park looking good. I mean, you've proven to be good stewards of that property. It's definitely been a long journey. It was one of the questions I asked, I think almost two years worth, as far as trying to work with the school board and try to put you to the old four. I'm sorry. I'm two years short. But get used to playground equipment that's probably not in use, but you've proven to be good stewards of the property, probably the good stewards with the playground. You know, I think if not this time, you should definitely receive some at some point. I'd like to congratulate the Riverfront Development Commission. And Mr. Hosbeck, he was there as well. We participated in the beautification day of the riverfront or Jibway Island. Many of our corporate partners were present. Having worked so hard, maybe a couple of years, wife's a little upset with me. She said, "I don't work that hard in our backyard," but that was worth it. I mean, a lot of people put in a lot of good work, and you can definitely tell the difference between a Jibway. Ms. McConian, thank you, and the neighborhood associations. The city would definitely be in a different place if it wasn't for our strong neighborhood associations and their support of the city. I thank you for your efforts. And SAFER grant is something we need to support, and we should support the firefighters as much as we can. They're proving just not to be effective firefighters, but also effective partners. I mean, they contribute not only as firefighters, but as citizens and stakeholders in the city for various important endeavors that our city participates in and they deserve. I'm all we can do to help them. This pawnbroker ordinance, I'm really excited to read about it. I think sometimes we feel as a city that we get a little desperate as far as business around here. And, you know, and not try to denigrate the pawnbrokerage business, but as a prosecutor, I know that a lot of the properties are stolen from break-ins. There's been several break-ins recently in the Adams Boulevard area, and cars that's been left unlocked. And I think one instance, the actual window has been smashed. But it's a good way to, it's a good effective crime-fighting tool to keep our pawnbrokers to a level of standard, a level of care, asking for a level of corporate citizenship in our community. Majority of our pawnbrokers are pretty helpful in solving crimes, and we solve a lot of our crimes through them. a lot of our crimes through them, but uh I think this is, even though the the ordinance says it's 1917, but I believe this is ordinance that was pretty much passed by the state, if not six months ago, but within a year, and I'm glad the city was on top of that and attempting to adopt those standards. See, uh Mr. Mitchell's in the audience today, I'd like to say hello. Doing great work out there in Bonavista. You developed, you adopted your own uh crime-free lease of Dendam ordinance recently, and uh I don't know if you led the way, but you definitely, uh by doing that, you uh said that is not necessarily a bad thing, but a good thing. And uh hopefully our city can work closer with your township to make things better for both our communities. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and uh welcome everybody. I too uh want to make some mention about the cemeteries. Although no one mentioned to me the the chapel situation, I had a lot of mention about what great shape the uh the cemeteries were in this year on Memorial Day weekend. Uh, people who were very grateful uh for the uh the care put into the lawns and the flowers, et cetera, uh they were very grateful and they wanted me to pass that on because they were referencing last year where they weren't too happy. But again, they didn't mention the chapel, they probably didn't see it, so, but um I'm sure we can get that something done about that. I want to especially welcome back Councilman Koloris, uh after your brief, well, not so brief hiatus. Uh there's been three of us now this year that have had to take extended time off for for health reasons and uh, but it's very good, sir, to see you, you were missed.
I'm glad you had me.
Yes, I agree. I want to uh also put in my plug for, there's nobody here that uh that does not want that Safer Grant and for everything that we can get for our fire department. And lots of people talk about, well, you know, if a, you know, Plan B or Plan C ought to be a, have a volunteer fire department, well, you know what? That won't work in the city of Saginaw. That's, I don't feel it would work. I, and I believe that a lot of people agree with me. Um, it's a, it's a different sort of uh thing we have here when you're dealing with fires, when you're dealing with the the age of buildings, and when you're dealing with safety, when you're dealing with uh neighborhoods that are in distress, and when you're dealing with um number of car accidents that we have on our streets. So, we all love the fire department, we want to do whatever it takes, and we thank you guys for, and gals, for all you've done to to try and make all that possible and take cuts where you could. Just excellent. Um, Mr. Georges, great businessman here in the city of Saginaw for many, many years and uh always relying on uh on him and his business, uh you know, it's, his are the trailers that we ride on uh as a city council for a number of years now. When we do ride in parades, um it's, those are provided by Bill Georges and uh and his company, so thank you very much and thank you for uh, big job taking over on the uh on the fireworks. That's, that's, you'd be congratulated for all that you do there. And I also want to uh thank Ms. Bullware for uh the work that you do at Veterans Park and Lawrence McKinney Park. After the number of years working at on Friends of Hoyt Park, I really appreciate what it takes, and it takes volunteers to keep parks going and together, it's a, it's a lot of work. It's not a thankless task because you get to see kids uh really enjoying the the parks and and what we have, so um thank you and God bless you for for all that you do. I believe that Mr. Clayton, is it? Carolyn, excuse me, excuse me, Carolyn Clayton, um shouldn't have to have those kinds of damages or or leaks in the house. I don't know all that was involved there, but I'm sure that uh we'll, we'll be looking into that with uh with our departments. So, that's concludes my remarks, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly want to second what Councilman Fitzpatrick has said regarding the fire department and the police department, all the service departments we have, where they're very highly cherished. But I won't repeat everything because it's already been said. I do wanna uh thank Mr. Georges for appearing because the fireworks is a huge event in this town, brings in a hundred thousand people, um and they're working to make that, the fireworks, uh Fire and Fireworks Inc. is working to make that even more benefit to the city through a longer and better show and through longer and more activities that day, so they're working very hard at this thing. And they always need volunteers, they always need help with donations, sponsors, as you mentioned, that can all also be looked at or always be found on the website. The volunteers would be a very big help, um and I'm sure Mr. Georges would be happy to talk to anyone, and I'm speaking this to our audience out there in public as well on SGTV, volunteers are important to this event because it's all a voluntary event. I want to mention a event that occurred on the 29th of May. Through the Saginaw Public School District, they they had a event for this, to honor at uh Centric Program participants. It was about a hundred and seventy, fifty students, young male students went through the Centric Program, seventy completed it, and this was an event to honor them for their effort and the hard work they put into completing that program. The program mentored these young men in ages all the way from grade school to high school, and three of us from the council were able to be there, Councilman Balls and uh Mayor Browning as well, they had an opportunity to observe these young males. It was really fascinating to see. They were taught not only education up, you know, to to catch up on their schooling, their and with tutoring, but they were taught other intangibles, honor, respect, dignity, um the kinds of things that we all want to see in our young males. And it was really heartening to see how these students had responded to that program. So, it was a one-year program, it'd be really nice if it could be funded further, but it was funded through the Michigan Department of Education, so it's hard to say if that'll happen, but it would be good. So I'm glad that the three of us at least were be able, were able to be there and enjoy that. Mr. Milne, you've hit upon a significant issue, not only for the cemeteries, not only to the public, but to this council and to the administration. And that is, lack of funds is the real underlying issue that we're talking about to to fix up the chapel. What people don't realize is there's a lack of funds that is so severe that we have an average age for the vehicles, this is a report we recently received to council, an average age for vehicles that are used by the cemetery's division of sixteen point four years. How many people will be driving their cars if it was sixteen point four years old? These, this is the equipment they use to dig the graves, this is the equipment they use to to haul the dirt, the dump trucks. And it's, that's only one issue. The cemetery's division a backhoe that's twenty-three years old, a trailer that's forty years old, a leaf vac that's twenty-two years old, a cart, utility cart twenty-two years old, a ground master mower that's twenty-two years old. These pieces of equipment are barely being held together with strings and hard work by our service, by our our maintenance crews because there's no funds to buy new ones. Just last year, we were able through some very helpful finances, the fire department and the management, to purchase finally a new um fire apparatus. We need to replace more of those. We have, the inspections division, the average age of the vehicles they use is ten point four years. They have vehicles that are fifteen years old that they're driving to try and do inspections in the city. The traffic engineering, the average age is twelve point five years. They have a panel truck that's seventeen years old. The problem goes to, this city as a group of citizens has never approached this problem with the idea that we have to solve it. And until we do, you're gonna continue to have the problems you've got. We can't solve it with the tax cap in place because that's when the problem started. We can't solve it with people leaving the city, we need people here, and we need people to recognize this is a great city and to be part of that and be part of the solution. That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Ball.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, citizens, I'd like to thank everybody for being here and the people that's watching that really care about the city of Saginaw and love this place, and we got plenty of them in here today, and we really appreciate you guys for doing all that y'all do for the city of Saginaw. Uh, the wonderful good people like you, I hate to think what would happen. I know for a fact that it takes only a few people to make things look bad for everybody. And, you know, that's why it's so great to have these neighborhood associations do what y'all do because you show what's good in Saginaw. You know, and I'm so thankful for it, it's just unbelievable. Um, I hope that everybody concerned, I met, I appreciate the gentlemen talking about jobs to come here to Saginaw because we really need some jobs. Uh, I think that's one of the reasons why we have so much crime in the city of Saginaw because we don't have good-paying jobs that allow people to become homeowners. I notice when people become homeowners, they have a tendency to take care of their properties a lot better. If you can't afford to buy flowers and stuff like that, then when you're renting, you know, the house is not gonna look as good as they normally look from people that can't buy flowers and shrubbery and things of that nature or, and you know, and stuff like that, so, uh we need some good-paying jobs so we can have some good homeowners. I personally, um, uh on the board directors of a credit union, that we get grants at that credit union to help people buy homes. And uh, you know, if you fall within a low-income level, they would give you a grant to help you pay for your, I mean, to buy a house. And then we even have a uh situation where every five years you can get that grant renewed, get a grant to fix up your house. You know, so there's things in place for people to help them with their homes, but a lot of people don't know it, you know, but you can definitely uh go to Wannagast Credit Union and check that out. But the thing is, you know, we definitely need some homeowners, we need some good-paying jobs in the city of Saginaw, and to give some people some hope. Um, you know, I noticed that everybody here that's giving to the neighborhood associations and and to the parks and stuff like that, you know, I'm a firm believer, you know, that you get, when you give, you give out of your heart, and when you give all your heart, you give love. And when you give love out of your work, that's what you receive back. Seeing like, the more you give, the more you receive. And, you know, that's why I'm involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters program so I can give to these young adults so that they don't go out and do crimes and stuff like that. Um, after what's, uh seven little brothers I done had in the last twenty-some years, only one of them got in a, in an issue with a police officer, and uh he cuffed him up and and pulled his underwear up in his donkey and and we haven't had any problems out of him after that. Matter of fact, I think the guy even helped him buy his first car. And uh and he's now, he's a productive member of society, he's not, he hasn't uh had any kids out of wedlock, anything like that, so the program does work. You know, so the thing is, I think what we all can do is help, when we mentor, it has a tendency to uh pay back society as a whole, and I'm always encouraging everybody here to get involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters program because I know that it works. But um, you know, I hope that we get the grants to keep the fire department open, I mean, we really need that, and I hope that we, you know, get that grant. You know, I, I heard a quote once, uh, you know, it's a lot easier to raise a child than to try to teach an adult after he learned a few things from other people. You know, so that's why it's so important, you know, for people to get involved in mentorship. Um, I hope that uh Carolyn, I think you brought, came here and you brought your complaints, and and I hope this is the place where uh Mr. Truman said that the buck stop here, you know, so if you have your contractor that did your work, I hope, hopefully they will take care of that, so so the roof won't be leaking. Uh, you know, it's a terrible thing to have somebody come and put all new stuff on your house and then it leaking after two or three years, that's, that's not right. So hopefully we get that issue taken care of. Um, I'm sure that the city manager made sure you get that information back to you and let you know what's happening. So, other than that, uh I don't have much to say, I'm looking forward to uh the fireworks, I'd like to thank uh Mr. Georges for all the work that you do in the community of Saginaw. Uh, I don't know if everybody know, but this guy, uh, some people even have said how nice he is in the newspaper, I know on two, two occasions already this year. You know, people like this that give to the city of Saginaw, we, we, we can't have nothing but love for people like that because when they do it, the skies brighten up with fireworks. And everybody, a hundred thousand people feel better when they go home that night when they see the beautiful fireworks in the city of Saginaw. So we really appreciate the work that you do here and we hope that you continue to do that. So uh those are my comments, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brendan.
Good evening, citizens. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our citizens who came with concerns. Ms. Clayton, we've spoken about that house next door, I'm hoping that that gets resolved now, now that it's come to the front. Also, your roof issue. Ms. Bullware, I'm excited, Unity Park is off the chisel, it is really pretty. I ride past, go into work, and I get excited every time I see that park. I remember when that park was open there for bloom, but you come through and you got your own little setting where you can see it and the flowers and, I had to take a picture of it so I could show it to my sister who worked there when we had Parks and Recreation, and she couldn't believe it, she could not believe it, so kudos to your crew. For the fireworks, I truly enjoy the fireworks, I truly do. I could sit at my house and watch them because I'm not a mosquito person, but this year I do plan to come out to the park and actually help do some stuff. Then we have Ms. Debbie. Ms. Debbie, as always, thank you so much for all that you do for us. Um, Ms. Bullware, I just got one thing, I pray that they are not taking our playground equipment off other area schools to give to you. Because if they are, we need to write some grants because we still have children in the neighborhoods that utilize stuff, so, but I still want you to have it, don't get me wrong, I just want you to know. That's, okay? Um, this has been an exciting, exciting year for the city of Saginaw. Uh, I, I had the chance to be entertained again last night with the first mayor at Park. I'm just so thankful that I get to hear concerts free. I'm just so thankful that my windows rattle from the concerts. It was a charge, but I got mine's free. Yeah, I guess it comes to my taxes that I roll off and pay. Once again, I, I'm, I'm still concerned because I'm still getting phone calls about the loudness, and we do have an ordinance. Uh, city manager, we have had, I have had people come to me talking about the grasses, again, not so much at the empty lots, but more so in private property. You know, we got an ordinance that says you can only be so tall. If the, if the lady with the ticket can come by and give you a ticket for parking across the sidewalk, she need to do the same thing with the grass. Because if I'm parking across the sidewalk in my yard, she'll give me a ticket, but she won't give them a ticket if their grass is up to their thighs. So I think we need to look into that. I'm just excited, I'm waiting for Friday Night Live to come so I can do a comparison on the noise factor, to see if their noises is loud as first mayor's. I'd like to thank the gentlemen for my Light Up the T-shirt, Light Up to See the T-shirt. As you notice, I did put it on to represent because I was not gonna be left out. I was not going to be. Mr. Mitchell, good seeing you. Everybody in the audience, it's good seeing you. I hope that we can start, continue to have audiences be, come and support us. Brandon, our firefighter of the year, you know, I'm, I'm down, I'm down with the firefighters. Whatever we can do, I'm surely hoping that we can do it to save the firefighters because you have sacrificed. The firefight department has sacrificed a lot. We know that we gotta make some cuts, but if we can. I'm sure city manager and Ms. Yolanda are really looking at this really- I'm sure city manager and Ms. Yolanda are really looking at this really, really hard, trying to figure out where we can keep that third fire station open and keep some firefighters. I'd like to welcome back my sidekick. You know, I actually missed him, can you believe that? I actually missed him saying, "Can you give me some water?" I asked about you every week, Larry, I'm so glad that you're back and I hope that you're feeling better.
Thank you very much.
That's all of my comments, Mayor.
Thank you. It's a great pleasure to ask Councilman Chlorus if he has any comments.
I might. I might. I want to pontificate on volunteering, but I pulled that act once before, and I think people understand. If they don't understand, tough. Mr. Georges the other day, and many other people, discussed volunteering pertaining to fireworks. If it wasn't for people doing that volunteer job, with volunteers only, don't make it work. You'd never see a volunteer, excuse me, you'd never see a firework without volunteers. And, Mr. Georges, I can't thank you enough for the work that you do and the work that you have done. And the next level of volunteering would pertain to the, to the, um, to the, excuse me, I'm frozen here, with the long words, with the, excuse me again, with the... I will. With the cemetery problem that we have with Mr. Millen. Millen, when you have a chance, see if you can find out what the cost, the estimated cost of making necessary reports on that would be. You mentioned work that has to be done, but how about, how about digging in a little deeper? Get a picture of how much, how much cost it would take, and then let's see if we can take it from there. You may get lucky. Or again, you may not get lucky. That's about enough for me. Thank you.
Thank you, and so glad to have you back, Larry. Thank you very much. We've addressed all the, pretty much all the guest speakers tonight, and thank you very much to all of our citizens and that you feel comfortable coming to city council. Yep? Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Protem, let's go with the Mayor Protem first.
Hey, everybody. I got a gentleman.
First time, too, how about that? I am so excited that Larry is here, I just, man, I was just...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Chlorus, also, I'd like to welcome you back. You were missed, and we hope you're feeling better. So thank you for being here. I just want to start out by thanking all of our speakers. All of you are very important to what happens in Saginaw, good, bad, and indifferent. And we hope that you feel comfortable coming to speak your concerns. And as was indicated earlier by my colleagues, Ms. Clayton, I'm sure you'll get the attention you need relative to your situation, and we want to make sure that that's taken care of. I do want to also thank all of our great community-minded businesses, as was indicated also. We have a small representation of those individuals here tonight, but all of us know and have seen the, sort of, the renaissance of the reemergence of Saginaw in so many ways and so many factors. So, we do have something to hang our hat on, we do have momentum to build on and expand, and also for others outside looking in, considering businesses, to come in and say, "Hey, this is a great place to set up shop." I was fortunate enough to represent city last Friday at the Dowell Event Center at the Church of Saginaw. It's an annual event where a lot of community pastors meet and also invite other businesses from various sectors, law enforcement, you name it. They had a whole list of categories where they asked us to speak or to pray on that topic, and I had government. So, I prayed for the president, the governor, the mayor, the county folks as well. But also, it's very important to understand that with this momentum, people, you know, they have interests, and we all like to be on winning teams. When things are happening great, we want to jump on board and be a part of it. So I think that's also a good current, if I can use the analogy of a river, you know, we have a good current going where folks want to jump on and ride with us. So, very excited about that. Also, the fire department, goes without saying, we all support you. You, meaning the fire department, as well as our law enforcement community, particularly the fire department, you have made some tremendous sacrifices, tremendous sacrifices, and they're duly noted, and it is our hope that the fire, the safer grant comes through. But beyond that, just looking at, I'm just wondering about the previous savings that were made in the past, are some of those things realized that could offset some of the deficit we're looking at? So, just some questions I've had since they spoke last time and looking at our budget. We have to do the right thing there, that's the purpose of our, one of the main catalysts for our Light Up the City, you know, public safety, police and fire, having those components in place, even having the adequate number of facilities to have the good rating that we have in terms of our insurance. There's a rating that we have as it relates to our response time. Yes, yes, I know. And so that also would be impacted by the loss of facilities relative to our ability to get to those locations to respond to the fires. So there's so much at stake here, we really support that 100 percent. Project Unity, Ms. Bowe, you've done a great job, as evident by the support from the city and a lot of the other things you've done. Best Park, Coach McKinney, we started that support a long time ago. The city had a lot to do with getting that name as it is, and Brian Peruel was a part of that as well. So you picked up and you kept it going. We appreciate your effort. As Councilwoman Moore indicated, we do have a lot of city schools closed, however, there are still a lot of kids in some of those areas. And I mentioned earlier to the mayor about particularly, for example, Morley Park, that's the sort of location for the African-American Cultural Festival. I know that's not a location you're pulling from, but just to make people aware that even though schools are closed in neighborhoods, there are still a lot of kids in those communities. Holton School, still a lot of kids there, Havering Ridge area as well, close to where you relocated. So, as we move forward, just want everybody to be mindful of that fact. Also, my colleague, Councilman Clark, mentioned the real issue, and wrapping up, the real issue here with our ability to fund is the tax cap. That's really, that's a big component of what we're dealing with. Only so long can we cut and readjust and make amendments, but eventually, there's going to be a tipping point. In every business, all business people know that, you know, revenue expenditures, et cetera, we can only manage that for so long, and there's going to be a time where it's going to be a tipping point. And as unfortunate as it is, but that's the reality. So we have to decide as a city, with all the great stuff going on, what do we want to look like in the future? And that includes dealing with that tax cap issue. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm the last one, all those nice bright yellow shirts out there, before we get to you, and I know you're anxious for that, so let me, and we've covered pretty much all that. You know, how busy are we here on city council, you know, in our community? I want to give you an example here, the last couple of weeks of what's been going on here. I had the pleasure on May 19th to be invited to the Council General of Japan's house down in Detroit for a dinner. Now that is part of our Tokushima, our sister city, who helps us greatly with the Japanese Tea House and the events and stuff go there, and so we're trying to keep those avenues open, and it was a wonderful, that May 19th was a dinner. May 20th, we had a wonderful ribbon-cutting ceremony here in the city of Saginaw. How our media missed it, I have no clue, other than they maybe didn't send out enough invitations. So I don't misread this, let me read what I have here. It says, "Ribbon-cutting ceremony at the Naval Operations Support Center, welcoming," and this is from Flint now, they moved from Flint. They were going to move temporarily, but once they got here, they seen the facility. So welcoming the first battalion of the 121st Infantry known as the Viking Battalion. The Viking Battalion provides mission command for the 809 Michigan National Army Guard Soldiers. Now that includes Company A stationed in Detroit, Company B stationed in Saginaw, Company C stationed in Grand Rapids, Company D stationed in Big Rapids, and Company F of the 237th Brigade Support Battalion stationed in Bay City. That is all right here at our Naval Support Center. And they now calling, the 125th is now calling Saginaw their home, and that's pretty exciting. Great ribbon-cutting ceremony there, Mr. Morales was there, city staff, that was great. Now, May 21st, the following day, we had a press conference that's tagging a community foundation for Project Safe Neighborhood Grants. That's a $500,000 grant, and that is for the guns and gangs, and part of that money is used for the Explorer Program and some other wonderful things that our chief provided for us. That's a half a million dollar grant for us here in the city of Saginaw. May 25th, Memorial Day Parade, boy, what a great parade here in the city of Saginaw. Once again, one of the projects of pride and the things they have, and boy, the pride on those veterans as they are in that parade is just amazing, just amazing to see those veterans down there for that. May 26th, we had that press conference down at the Bancroft Hotel, reinventing Saginaw Symposium. What a great job city staff did with that and our government officials there in the progress that we do with the blight and in combination with our law enforcement, our neighborhood associations, our faith-based community, everyone working together, great numbers, homicides are down 54 percent, and across the board, a lot, a lot of reduction for that. Two days later, we had a citywide meeting, that was at St. Stevens Parish Hall. The following day, we're out to Horizon Conference Center with a wonderful program out there of the young men. The highlight for me is I finally got to meet Councilman Ball's little brother. So, yes, he does exist, and he's a very, very likable young man. We had the honor here at city hall to welcome 20 3rd graders from Bethlehem School. Interesting, the tour was historical sites in city of Saginaw. That was their tour, the whole day, 9 o'clock to 2:30, visiting historical sites here in the city of Saginaw. So that was a great, great opportunity. Unfortunately, the news has, or the word has got out on Jefferson, Jazz on Jefferson. I am sorry to report that more and more people are coming down there, the lines are getting longer for food, but I'm going to tell you, what a great time, Jazz on Jefferson, and the tour, some of those homes down there, beautiful. I went through a garden that I didn't even know existed in this city, and I've been here for almost 50 years. I didn't even know that garden existed. What a beautiful garden there over on Jefferson, so forth. Had a great time with WSGW live on the morning show, call-in, two hours, had a great questions come in, "When are we going to fix the roads?" And in addition to that, the following day, we're over at, on Weiss, at the Consumers Power, Mr. Tom Beegan invited us over there, and during his presentation, I am going to ask him to comment just a couple of the numbers that he shared with us for Consumers Power on response times. It is going to blow your mind when you hear what they have come up with, it's amazing, and we're so proud of the, everything that Consumers is doing with us and here. And then even on June 5th, I had a great opportunity to speak Habitat for Humanity. You talk about tearing down homes. We're tearing down 900-and-some homes, Habitat for Humanity, almost 30 homes they're rehabbing. 30 homes they're rehabbing within a week in our community. That's what Saginaw is all about. A lot of stuff going on, people, and I even have more here if you're interested, if you're bored and you say there's nothing to do in Saginaw, I have a flyer here, I think all council members have these too. It's this one right here, I know I'm over time. This is called Saginaw Celebrates Summer 2015. If you don't have one of these, you're missing out. Because there is very few days during the summer, there isn't something going on in this wonderful community. I know time's over, one last thing, July 10th, Pride starts their Friday Night Live concert, July 10th. July 10th is also their 100th concert. 100th concert here, free in the city of Saginaw. With that matter of work, let's go on to our next business.
Mayor, your next item of business is reports from the manager.
To the manager. Thank you. Couple things before we do get Mr. Beegan up here. And I want to respond to a few things. If there are council members that get reports about billable lots that, which is occupied homes that need the cuts done on the grass, please send those to Public Services to Phil Carwatt's office, and they'll get them cut and it gets charged back to the homeowner in that case. So if you have that, please, please let Mr. Carwatt know. And a few council members hit right on it with the cemeteries, that's coming out of the general fund pot, so it's now the same thing that pays for city hall, fire department, police department, clerk's office, so it's difficult to get any more funding for that. I will say that, as I reported last meeting, we have, we are looking at, or we have changed the investments, so we're looking that perhaps we can get some more returns on investment to help pay for some of that. And I'll also say that Mr. Carwatt and a few of us have been looking at cemeteries, and he has had that chapel looked at by an engineering firm, and it is structurally sound. At this time, that appears to be a facade issue, so something that we can look at and get a cost for, maybe we can take care of it, but if not, it's not, it does need to be taken care of in the next few years, but at this point, it's not affecting the structure of the building. So, something we can, we can look at further, however. I wanted to just address a few of the items with the budget as well, and we, we are hoping that we get the safer grant, and also hoping that we can get the extension for the current grant, which would help cover us in the meantime before that announcement comes. But I have to say that, that we do need to look at the bottom line here and the funding we have available, and also what the city has done. You can look at the budget a lot of different ways, there's a lot of things that go into that decrease in funding, retire your healthcare, and some other things. But I'm looking at the bottom line of the number of firefighters, and the main change that was made in the fire department was vacation slots and it decreased overtime. I go back and look at the budget, however, and at one time, the fire department was over budget and overtime. So you have to take that into consideration for that reduction. And the second point on that is, the fire department is losing fewer personnel than the safer grant. The current safer grant is 15, the proposed reduction is 13. So the city has put in two firefighter positions to recognize that decrease in overtime as well. So we have to, I think, look factually at what's going on there, and also, we can keep working to see what we can do to improve that situation as well, but I think we need to, we need to look at that number of firefighters there that... That it's not decreasing as much as it was two years ago when we got the SAFER Grant. And I think that's an important aspect to look at. We've, we have, the city has given and recognized that change. So, I just wanted to mention that as well. Mayor did a good job of covering a lot of the events that have been going on the last, since the last council meeting. And I think a lot of people don't know about the Naval, Naval Training Center that's in the city. But those are, those are full-time employees over there, and also the new employees for the National Guard moving in there. There are a number of full-time guardsmen that are stationed in the city of Saginaw. And one of the points that they made during the presentation was that they, they want to be a part of the community, and I think they do want to take a more active role in, in doing things in the city. So, if, if any council members are interested in talking to their command, I know it's something that, that we can set up as well. The Reinventing Saginaw Summit that the mayor mentioned, I just have to thank John Stempel, Debbie Buck, and Vicky Davis, they did a lot of the planning for that event. And I think it was, and the state of Michigan as well, they had some people coordinating that. I think that was a great event, and I was, Mr. Stempel brought this idea a few months ago, and I, I guess I was kind of skeptical on attendance, but that was standing room only in the Bancroft Lobby and also in the Symposium part. So, I was very impressed with, with the turnout. Congressman Kildee was there, members of MEDC, and representative from Senator Peter's office, and a number of elected officials were there. So, it's, it was a great event, and the city of Saginaw was, has been the first one to actually look at the impact that these hardest-hit funds have had on the city of Saginaw in crime and fire reduction. So, I think that's a great thing for the city of Saginaw as well. And the city engaged Saginaw Valley State University Dr. Andrew Miller to look at the effects that the change in blight and change in policing has had on the city of Saginaw. His analysis illustrates the impact that the blight removal has had on the city. And if you didn't get a chance to go, and I don't actually think that the studies were handed out, but I have a copy of the presentation that was made by Dr. Miller that we can get to council as well. But if you see the, who helped with the study, you'll see a familiar name too, because Mitchell Clock was one of the students who helped with the, with the analysis. I believe he's related to a council member of ours. So, great work by the students and the professor there that did that for us. And I'd say that Saginaw being one of the first ones to actually look at that impact is, is great for our efforts to get additional grant funds for blight, but also, you kind of set the standard on reviewing these things if you're the first one in there to get it done. So, I give a big congratulations to the Inspections Department who handles that grant and administering that grant. And also, thank you for the County Land Bank and the Treasurers Office for the county, who does a great deal of work on that grant as well. So, if you're interested in that study, we can get that. Maybe we can even get Dr. Miller in at some point to talk a little bit about that as well. The ALPACT meeting, I think I mentioned last time that we were changing a little bit how we were doing that. I think the last ALPACT meeting that we had on May 28th was one of the best ones that we've had. There was a lot of dialogue and interaction, and we're going to, we have a little addition to our management update tonight for Chief Ruth, that he talked about ALPACT, so I wanted him to talk to council about it as well. So, I think that was very successful in changing. We're going to try to keep up the momentum with that group as well. We also had the Place Plans Meeting on June 1st. Councilman Clock attended that as well as Councilman Bench. That was a very good meeting as well. That meeting was to kind of help set the parameters and the goals that we want to see from the analysis. So, I know we'll get more information on that in the next few weeks, and then, again, every, council's welcome to attend that if you have time. And then, there will be more input at maybe some pop-up events in the city this summer as well. And finally, we were contacted, and I wanted to mention that, I know the mayor's aware of this too, but MiHente Magazine, their 20th anniversary is coming up on, in June, the publication started on June 6th in 1995 with 2,000 copies, and was started by Larry Rodardi, publisher with 2,000 copies in that year. So, it's, their next edition will be their 20th anniversary, and Larry also is one of the coordinators for the Cinco de Mayo Parade and Celebration. So, I wanted to give congratulations to him on, on the magazine and the professional work that they do over there. First presentation or discussion we have is Mr. Beegan from Consumers Energy about the Light Up the City event.
I'm, I'm surrounded by a lot of my friends who are a part of the planning committee for Light Up the City Saginaw 2015. These people behind me since January of this year have been getting together very often for many, many hours to plan this event. And for the time that these people have put into this thing, here's what you're going to see. This year's event will be the biggest and best Light Up the City Saginaw campaign we have ever seen in this city. It starts next week, Wednesday of next week, June 17th, Mayor Pro Tem, we're going to see you there. June 17th next week at 5:30 Ojibwe Park. We're going to have hundreds, maybe a thousand or more people that are there to kick this event off in here. There's music, there's refreshments, there'll be people, there'll be agencies there to talk to, a lot of people there to get this kicked off. It will be the first night of the eight walks that we're going to do in the city of Saginaw. As we know, this is a crime initiative. This is a grassroots crime initiative. These people behind me are using their network, they're talking to people, and the whole idea is, let's get the citizens behind public safety to reduce the crime issue in the city. And how do we do that? We get the citizens to walk the streets at night on Wednesday nights. Wednesday nights, turn on your lights and be involved in this. So, in addition, Mr. Mayor, to all of the activities that you've got in your brochure on Wednesday night, why don't you join us for a walk and Light Up the City all of eight weeks during the summer? So, June 17th, it all starts on June 17th for Light Up the City Saginaw 2015. Now, you noticed tonight, a lot of us are wearing these yellow shirts, and Madam Councilwoman, it's good to see you in the colors. I noticed even the city attorney is kind of getting in the spirit of things here a little bit tonight. So, I appreciate that. This is the first year ever. You're going to see a lot of these over the course of the summer. We're going to give these shirts out to everybody that joins us for walks. There will be hundreds of people wearing these by the end of the summer. And if you look at these on the front side facing you, is an emblem that was drawn by a 3rd grader in the city of Saginaw. We had a contest for this year to draw the Light Up the City emblem, which represents Light Up the City Saginaw 2015. A little, a little 3rd grader in the SASSA schools won the drawing, and this is her drawing on all of our shirts. If my, my participants would spin around, we didn't choreograph this, so they're just kind of, you notice on the back, we've got a list of sponsors. This year, we have so many business sponsorships that are, you can turn back around. So, so many business sponsorships that are joining us this year to help come with money to make this year's campaign even bigger than it's been before. This is, this is an initiative. This is a campaign, that's a community campaign. This is about us, this is by us, and this is for us, for our city. So, I want to invite you, I want to invite everybody you know, and even people you don't know, to join our campaign this year. It will be our best campaign yet. So, on behalf of business, labor, schools, virtually every single department in the city of Saginaw, public safety, Michigan State Police, whom am I missing? Neighborhood associations and people, a lot of good people who care about this city and refuse to let this city go. We're taking over this city, one person at a time, one light at a time, every single Wednesday night during the course of the summer, and we will not stop until we get there. So, thank you for this time. We invite you all to join us for our Light Up the City campaigns this year. And also, I will point out that on your consent agenda are two items that will benefit Light Up the City. Item number three, which is a petition to put up a banner, and item number 17, which is a petition to do amplification at Ojibwe Park. We promise we won't rattle windows, we promise we'll stop early, so we won't offend anybody, but be a part of this campaign. Don't miss this campaign. Thank you.
Tom, if you'll stay there for a minute, we have some questions possibly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Beegan, just a question regarding the, the actual date locations. Will the, the actual meeting place be at the location listed at the bottom for each Wednesday?
Yep.
That you'll congregate at those locations?
So, what will happen is, I'm going to let Trooper, Trooper McMillan talk about that.
Certainly. So, if you look at the calendar up there, the 17th is the kickoff. So, we'll meet on Ojibwe to begin with.
Right.
We'll do the celebration, the food, the drinks, the fun, and then we'll move from that location to a secondary location where we'll begin the walks, because it would be too far of a walk from Ojibwe.
Okay.
That would be in Quadrant 3. The next week, on June 24th, we would meet at the location you see on there, Covenant Healthcare, the corner of Stone and Congress, so for Quadrant 4. And the next time we go to Quadrant 3, which would be July 15th, we would go directly to Local 699 on Bagley. So, that would be the starting point. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Other council members? Send the council members, Councilman Tibbs.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I guess I would like to see some statistics as far as when this Light Up the City first started and our, and the rate that the crime began to decline here. I bet there would be a significant, a significant correlation there. Because I remember two years ago, I believe, was when it first started. I believe Michigan State Police began it. They took some idea out of Boston and kind of brought it here, and, and I just thank you for your support. It's very grassroots, as you stated. But my question is, I think it was always considered to be temporary as far as, you know, Michigan State Police getting the ball rolling. But is it something now that, you know, that the ball is rolling, that you guys are going to, not necessarily phase out, but just kind of pass, continue to pass the reins on to, to the local organizations?
The Light Up the City campaign, I mean, the Michigan State Police has been a big part of that, sort of the Saginaw City Police and the Fire Department, a lot of others in here. This, this is real, this is really momentum that this group was the catalyst to starting this. But this is really about the neighborhoods taking control back over their neighborhood. We have all of the neighborhood associations that are, that are involved in this thing. So, I think regardless of the faces that may change throughout this, you are going to see the neighborhood associations that are engaged right now, stay engaged. So, I think they will control this, and they're going to make sure that this thing doesn't go away. It's about people getting out of their houses and walking down their streets.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I remember participating in the first one, and, you know, people were like, whoa, what's this?
Yep.
Passing out the efficiency light bulbs.
Right.
But right now, they're, they're looking forward to folks knocking on their door. And thank you for your support. I appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you.
Brenda?
Do you have that printed out for us? I got the door knocker, but I don't have the actual, see, on there you got, where we going? Where we going to be there? So, if I put the door knocker up, it still don't tell me where I'm going.
Yep. We've, we're going to be, those are going to be starting to show up on neighborhood doors, I think, yet this week. We're going to start hanging those out to advertise that. In fact, Trooper McMillan is on his way out to his car right now to get you some of these handouts here.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Tom, I wish I could be there on that day, but unfortunately, we have so many wonderful things going on in our city, it's just very hard. I am going to be at Central Michigan College of Medicine, that is, they're ribbon-cutting and welcoming our college medical students here at the same time. So, boy, you can count on me, I will be at several of those walks and do the best I can with walking. So, is there any other comments for, for Tom on the Light Up the City? Because I'm going to keep him here for another second on a different matter, so if you don't mind. Any other questions? Yeah, Councilman Fitzpatrick.
How does consumers, you know, allow you to, to spend so much time with us? It's just, it's incredible, and I thank your company.
Thank you.
For giving us such fine people and individuals such as yourself to, to really be involved in the community.
Thank you.
It's, it's great. It says a lot about Consumers Energy.
Thank you. Thank you.
They mentioned the, the light bulbs. Is that still part of this?
We will be similar to what we've done the last two years. We will have our energy efficiency people, called the Helping Neighbors Program, who will be walking with us with energy efficiency light bulbs and encouraging people to turn on their porch lights. And if they flip the porch light on, it doesn't come on, we'll change the light bulb for you and put an energy efficiency light bulb for you. So, same as again, this year, we'll be doing, at the same time, promoting that program, which is an energy efficiency program for our income-qualified residents in the city of Saginaw. We'll be there again.
Great. Thank you.
And Councilman Fox?
Yes, I'm with you. Beegan, yes, it could be you. It was energy efficient, now we're going to LEDs, you're right?
Yes, sir.
All right. That's even better.
Yep.
Just want to make sure, since it's energy efficient, we're going to go all the way, right?
Yep, yep.
And, okay. And, go ahead, Councilman Balls.
Mr. Beegan, we thank you for the work that you're doing for the community of Saginaw.
Thank you.
You know, working with Consumers Power is, you know, one of the, one of my main contributors to keeping you guys open. And that, you know, since you, the spokesman, I think, maybe I ought to take back, maybe you can give us a break on those consumer bills in December. Maybe cut out 100 bucks every resident in the city of Saginaw and probably make us all feel good. So, that's, that's something, you know, you might want to throw into your hat. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the idea.
Well, go ahead, Brenda.
I'd just like to thank, obviously, when I say, thank you so much. I didn't want you to think I was ungrateful, but thank you.
Councilman Balls, we do have some good news for you. Did you have something? He does have some extra good news for you. He's not going to reduce the bill, I'll tell you that. We did have a wonderful meeting, referenced Jibwe Island and the power situation going over there. So, that's great. But, but Tom, the number of our council members could not make that open house over there at your facility on Weiss here, and you, you held that for us. And I know that, and I'm just speaking off the top of my head, if any time a council member would like to see that facility, please get ahold of Tom, and I know he's going to walk through there. You will be amazed at what happens in that building. I have no clue what goes on in that building, especially when we have an approaching storm or a major storm coming in. It is unbelievable what they do over there. But Tom, you impressed me because there were some numbers you shared with us that the Regulatory Commission sets some standards for Consumers Power to meet. Would you share with us those standards that the Regulatory Commission sets on responding, and then what your standards are over there with you?
The, like all other businesses anywhere in the state, we have to comply with a lot of regulations from different agencies, state agencies, local agencies, the municipality where we work. One of our governing agencies is the Michigan Public Service Commission. The Michigan Public Service Commission basically has oversight over our entire operation, from building to fuel operations to virtually everything that we do. It always goes through a Public Service, Public Service Commission approval. They also set a lot of standards for us that we need to abide by, and one of those standards is our gas leak response, which is the one you're referring to. The Public Service Commission said anytime that we get a call for a gas leak, we need to respond to that gas leak within 60 minutes. Consumers Energy said that's not good enough. We cut that gas, that response time in half. We said personally, we're going to set our own response time to 30 minutes, and so far this year and last year, we've bested that every single year. So, what, what you will see sometimes, if we get a call for a gas leak, there's a gas crew working on some project. If they go, get a call for a gas leak, they're going to stop what they're going to doing, they're making the place safe, and they're heading, heading off to that gas leak, 30 minutes or less. We've beaten that every time so far this year.
That's impressive with the city of Saginaw. And the surrounding areas around, because you cover such a large area.
Yes.
I was very impressed with that. I don't think we realize that when there's a gas leak, man, they, they pretty much drop everything and get to that gas leak as quick as they can.
Priority one.
And your partnership with our Saginaw Fire Department is just unbelievable. And your partnership with our Saginaw Fire Department is just unbelievable. I know when the chief has mentioned before, when they call, consumers, man, they're on their way and does a tremendous job. So, very nice. I did share with council members and a couple of our staff members, please do not hold these up. Please do not show anybody else. There's only a limited number of these that Tom was able to get for me. He had to work very hard to find these, by the way. And, but I did wanna share them with our council members. And it's... And Brenda's already went over here and said, oh, look, it's a flashlight. So, but that's very, very, very good for us. And so, Tom, thank you so much for everything you've done. This is another example of going well above and beyond what the job has in this description. Your involvement in this community and being partners with those that we have here, we just can't thank you enough. Our thanks is every one of these council members and our city staff need to get out there. At least two or three of those walks, please try to get out there and do those. If you don't have at least two in, I want your light back. And we will keep track. So, don't wrap them up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'll point out also, every one of these folks in the yellow shirts in here and the ones in uniform, and many of your people on your city staff have been a part of this. It's only working because all these people are pitching in.
Yep. You're the nucleus, buddy. We need that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. And as I mentioned before, the ALPAC meeting that we had, last ALPAC meeting, was, I think, one of the more effective meetings we've had. And it's a great opportunity because attending that meeting, we typically have the... We have the Saginaw Police Department, Saginaw Township Police Department, FBI, Secret Service, State Police, U.S. Attorney's Office. So, there's a lot of opportunities for those who attend to ask questions. The meeting is chaired by Lieutenant from the Police Department, Lieutenant Marv Jenkins and Mr. Carl Williams. They're co-chairs. So, part of what we've been doing as a city is trying to do more outreach. And one of the things that Chief Ruth did was to give a presentation at the NAACP. And following the presentation, you had the opportunity to interact. And that's when they started talking about the 411 on the 5-0, which is produced by the NAACP. It's a flyer to basically do's and don'ts of what to do when you're approached by the Police Department. So, that led to more discussion and a partnership on producing some public service announcements. So, Chief Ruth could come up and give you a little update on that. And also, we have a story that was done, I believe, late last week on the first installment of those.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That's what I'm here to talk to you about today, is a collaboration that I think we've built at the Saginaw Police Department with you, NAACP. I think we've always had a good working relationship. But I think the relationship got even a little bit better on May third of this past year. I was invited to speak at their monthly meeting. They asked me to speak for about maybe fifteen to twenty minutes. It lasted about an hour and a half. I ask, I gave a little presentation, opened it up for questions. I answered all their questions for them. I think that that helped build the relationship a little bit better. At the end of that, Leola Wilson, the president of our local branch, got up, and she gave a little presentation on the brochure that you have in front of you, the 411 and the 5-0. And as she's giving her presentation, I'm scratching my head. The, I guess, where's Tom Beegan? Light bulb popped on. So, after the meeting, Sergeant Reggie Williams was there. I got ahold of Reggie, talked a little bit with Leola, and we decided that we are going to try to do some public service announcements about this. Not just a public service announcement. We are gonna film a person being pulled over by a police officer, show them what they should do when they get pulled over by a police officer, how to be respectful, how to treat the officer, and how the officer should treat you during that particular traffic stop. We have a sample of that today. It's not the actual public service announcement that's gonna be put out. That is still being edited at this time. And that will be put out later this week is when we'll get a copy of it. We partnered with WNEM-TV Five, Reggie Williams did. And last Monday afternoon, about four, five o'clock in the afternoon, they started filming. And you'll notice some of the stores here, there's pretty familiar stores within the city of Saginaw where they filmed in front of. But I think this is a very good educational tool. This is just the start. We're gonna film some more where we have a conversation between an officer and people on the street on foot as to what to do, how to react. And we're also gonna have a public service announcement done of a call for service, maybe a domestic assault at a house, and what the officers have to do. One of the key things is, is the message we have to get out. And that's what's so essential. We have to get the message out of what police officers do. They're looking at your hands at all times. That's what we're trained to do from a safety standpoint. We're looking for your reaction. And I think these public service announcements are gonna help. I think it's gonna help. At least I hope it helps. And that's all we can do, is keep trying. So, if we can run the film now, I can answer questions after it.
Or any type of group where you're meeting with people that you could actually have this played for that particular group. And that will help us connect a little more and engage the community. And like I said, there will be more of these produced in the next few weeks. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Go ahead. Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering, Chief, one of the things that is a big issue is passengers. What's the passenger? I mean, it's pretty hard to keep your eye on everybody's hands, right? What should the passengers be doing?
The passengers should just keep their hands where you can see them.
You do. Everybody keeps their hands.
Everybody in the vehicle should have your hands where you can see them. That's it. Don't hide your hands behind your back. Put it underneath yourself. Tuck it in your waistband. Don't act like you have a gun. Just keep your hands up where they can be seen. You notice when an officer goes up to the vehicle and ex-officer Mayor Browning will tell you, we are taught when we walk up to a vehicle, and it may sound stupid, but we're taught to reach your hand out and push on the trunk to make sure it's locked. Because people have been in the trunk before. They'll crawl through the backseat, get in the trunk, the trunk pops open, and they shoot the officer when they walk up to the window of the car. We're taught to touch the back of the car. You notice, out of instinct, Officer Adams walked up and touched the back of the car. That was one of the questions at the NAACP meeting. Why did they come up and push on my trunk of my car? Why'd they touch my car like that? Then they came up to my back window on the passenger side, and they peeked in and shined their light in there before they stepped up to the driver's window. You know, what do they think I'm hiding? We're looking to see who's in the backseat. We don't want to end up like the trooper, getting killed, walking up to the car. So that's what this is all about, is teaching the public our techniques that we're taught to stay alive and stay safe. And sometimes they're misinterpreted. So what you bring up is a very key point. And that's something that maybe we should talk about, is have a car with four people in it. We're going to do more of these. So whatever suggestions and ideas you have, that's great. I think a good one would be is having a couple of officers approach a group of people in the street, maybe eight or nine people, and show the proper way to act and the improper way to act, to escalate the situation by meaning proper way to act.
Yeah.
There's ways that you can escalate a situation, just the way you act. And that's what we don't want.
Right.
We don't want it at all.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to go ahead, Mr. Mayor?
We have had some groups together. A group of us have met at churches, or we had a meeting at a church to educate our youth. That's a good starting point, because vacation Bible school is getting ready to start. I heard you talk about school in the fall. That's too late.
It is.
That's really too late. So just a suggestion, and maybe we can get together and we can get with some of the pastors.
And this is what we need your help in. And this is what I talked about at ALPAC. I can't do it all alone. Everybody's got to step up to the plate. When you know of your church having a meeting like that with the youth, or anybody, whether youth or not, anybody of drivable age, or even younger than that, so that they know prior to driving what to do in a car, or if they're driving with their older brothers or sisters, how to act in a vehicle when they get pulled over, that we need your help taking this information to those groups, church groups, school groups, you name it, anything they do all summer long.
We need to get together, because there's a bunch of groups that's getting ready to start. And it would be ideal to be there, so that you can actually tell them, First Ward has a group that's getting ready to start on Monday, and it's starting from ages 12 to 18.
And that is exactly what we're looking for. And that's where we need to have communication, because Detective Sergeant Reggie Williams can set it up for some officer to stop by. We have four community police officers in the city of Saginaw. So every single day of the week, we have coverage of community police, 24, not 24/7, but seven days a week.
Right.
So if there's something on a Sunday or a Saturday, we can have officers stop by and give that message. We are, right now, the brochure you have in front of you is a copy. The NAACP has some very nice brochures that they put out. Leola's ordered some. When we get more in, we're going to pass those brochures out. There's no reason why you can't do it either as community leaders. We're all community leaders. And everybody's got to step up to the plate and help. When this comes out later this week, I'm sure we'll have copies. We can put it on DVDs. We can put it online, so people can look at it. And we want to get it out there. Churches need to play this. It'd be nice to have movie theaters play it before movies start. Thirty seconds, 60 seconds, get a little spot in there.
So I know it's going on Facebook. It's going on our Facebook page, right?
Yes. I think Ms. Debbie Buck is going to handle that for us, correct?
Facebook and Twitter.
She's on it, 100%. And these will, as they come out, we're going to publish them. I'm sure that Mr. Morales, as we get these, I don't have to come up and speak every time, because I'll talk forever, but we could play for council the actual public service announcement as they come out, just so that you can see them. And they'll be available. They're going to be online. They'll be everywhere, so everybody can take them. But that's, we need everybody's help to do it. We just can't do it alone at the police department. Everybody's got to help in this. Everybody's got to send the message out there to keep our citizens safe here in the city of Saginaw. And I don't even care if it's people in Saginaw. This needs to go countywide, citywide, Michigan-wide, statewide. Everybody needs to know this information. Everybody. And I'm sure WNEMTV-5 is going to take that message out there. They're really proud of this. They're happy with the results. And I'm sure it's going to be happening in other towns.
Councilman Clark, or Councilman Ballz first, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Would it be proper for us to drop these off when we do the walk the streets for the Light of the City?
I think it's a great idea.
Why don't we just take the, we can get every household in the city of Saginaw, drop one off of each household.
Yep. That's a great idea. It's a great idea. Well, I have to get some from, either we can make copies like that, or we can get some from NAACP, see if they came in yet.
We're going to put you in charge of that, sir. Can you handle that?
Hey, everybody always wants to put me in charge of everything. The good thing is, I can delegate. So I'll take care of it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Clark.
Yeah, I want to comment. You mentioned the theaters. I think that's a fabulous idea. That's where so many youth do go. And it's a perfect time. But I do also want to mention that it could be a good idea to get it for a pre-prom show.
We talked to them about that this year before the prom, pre-prom event. Reggie Williams went to the schools and actually spoke with the students.
But showing it would be very good. But another place is the Y. They have the youth groups there. That could be a regular routine as part of their program. There's a lot, there's so many of these kinds of groups, but this is just an excellent idea.
Yeah, well, thank you. We just want to show you that we're not sitting back. We're doing what we can do to help keep our kids safe in the city of Saginaw.
It'll do it. It'll help. And thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great, great presentation.
Yeah, I'll mention that the dialogue that we have in those meetings can lead to additional collaboration, too. A number of the people at the meeting talked about complaints, and so I can, I address that citywide for the city police department. And it's true of, I think, almost every department in the state. But when you get pulled over, it is recorded on video, and unless there's something wrong with the equipment, or someone turns it off, it's, there's an audio recording, too. It goes through the mic. So if something happens and you feel like there's an issue with you getting pulled over, file a complaint. There's a process to do that, file it with the city, file it with the township, the state police. So a number of people might not know how to do that. And I know Ms. Wilson talked to the chief afterward, and that's, I think, another thing that they're going to work on. How do you file a complaint? And can you put links to that? So that's another thing that came out of that discussion we had at the ALPAC meeting. So I think there can be a lot that comes from that discussion. And these are a good example of that, and that collaboration that we can have, and just to get information out there. And as the chief said, it's not something that's just city talking to some of the people at the meeting. There are a lot of complaints in other local units. So you need to know the process there, and if there's an issue, you need to know how to file a complaint there. And I think the representative from Saginaw Township said their police department has recordings going back 10 years. I think it was at least 10 years. They keep theirs for a long time. Most departments don't keep it that long, but we do, we do keep it in the city for a while, and I know the state does as well. So that's another important point, if there are issues. That concludes the management update for this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, excuse me. We have a question for the manager.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, you said, we mentioned something about the grant, the, I can't remember the name of the grant, but we got for half a million dollars.
For, oh, the PSN grant? Yeah. That was, the mayor mentioned that.
Okay. Well, can we get a report on those grants, on what we have done with those grants? I mean, you say the money gone someplace, and it goes there, but we don't ever get a report on what they actually did with the money.
Can we do that right now? The chief would like to talk about it.
I'm not only talking about the chief, but I'm talking about the county got 170,000, and we sent something to the community, someplace else we sent 170,000.
I can address that also.
Okay, thank you.
What they did is, we have 172,000 dollars on that grant. The other money is divvied up between the other organizations within Saginaw County that do whatever they do to help the citizens within, in this community. And we have to report on a quarterly basis as to what we have done. We just sent in our first report. We are right on time with sending it in to get our funding back. The other organizations may not be as quite prompt as we are. So when I find out down the road, and I have the feeling it'll be about three to four months before I find out actually how the other organizations are doing and what they're doing, I will bring it back and present it to Mr. Morales, so he can get you the information, or I can come back and speak on that particular subject, as to what everybody else is doing.
I think it's only appropriate, we, as a city council, approve something like that, then we need to know what's happening with it.
Sure. And from our end, and just in a nutshell, it's been very, very successful for us from the standpoint of the school resource officers within Thompson Middle School. There were some issues in there earlier in the year, and our officers have gotten in there. They've been working with the teachers and the administrators with that school, and they have helped straighten things up within Thompson Middle School. It's actually, things are going pretty good. School's out in two days, and we have discovered that the problems have gone down quite a bit since our school resource officers have been in there. And that's the true test of whether something's working. Do you get any complaints? And how many calls for service do you get? And when they go down, you know you're doing something right. And they have gone way down at Thompson Middle School. Now, in the fall, we're going to extend out a little bit and get into some of the other schools.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I wish that we could do something in the summertime, because that's when most of the problems occur.
Yes.
You know, with youth, you know, they're not in school, they're not doing anything, and that's when we have a lot of issues with murders and whatever. And I'm just hoping that maybe we can get in the community and try to make sure that we can help out with that.
Yep. And we're trying to stay on top of that also. There is provisions within the Project Safe Neighborhood Grant that allow us to do things in the summer also. When we know of activities and group events that are going on, we can participate in those using that grant and utilizing those funds. So the windows are open. We already have things that we're involved in. Actually, the Project Safe Neighborhood was written into that particular grant as part of it. So the officers will be out there walking the streets with everyone else, and hopefully giving out those brochures from NAACP.
Do the police officers get any credit for mentoring or anything like that?
What do you mean, as far as credit?
Do they mentor, or do you encourage them to get out and mentor people in the community?
Yes, that's actually what this program is about. But there are other programs we have within the Saginaw Police Department for mentoring. We have another grant called Youth Prevention Grant. In that particular grant, we have officers that go out and work with youth constantly, helping out on baseball teams, football teams, you name it. Mentoring children in the community.
Thank you. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, those are volunteer programs, right, or they're getting compensated for?
The officers?
The officers.
They're getting compensated. We do have officers that volunteer also, though, for other programs.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, good. Glad we got that one. Okay, that concludes the manager's update. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, your next item of business is the Consent Agenda.
And the agenda has been available at City Hall on the citywide website and on SGTV Channel 191. So need a motion to adopt a consent agenda leaving room for exceptions?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? It moved and supported. Councilman Tibbs. Councilman Tibbs is nine and 14. Are there any other exceptions? Any other exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Yes, our first item is nine. Approve a purchase order to Red Holman Buick GMC for $45,343.15 for a 2015 GMC Yukon 4x4 SLT utility vehicle for the fire department. That's Councilman Tibbs.
Thank you, thanks, Chief. Just a quick question. I mean, I guess, first I was concerned about such a purchase when, when we were looking at what the fire department is going to look at, look like, as far as if the safety grant was granted, or if it wasn't granted. So I guess I was a little concerned as far as perception-wise with the city. And I would like to thank you and the city manager for getting back to me about the emails, and you said you had the same concerns. But from my understanding, logistically, is the purpose for this vehicle, from my understanding, the battalion chief, his or her vehicle serve as basically the command center if there's some type of incident or fire at the place. And then the fire marshal, he, or it's a he now, but possibly a she, need a vehicle as far as also transporting equipment to calls he may receive. And at this point, the fire, or the fire marshal has a vehicle that he utilizes, but that vehicle he utilizes doesn't have the ability to carry the equipment that he may need to respond to investigate. And so this vehicle that he will be using will allow him to basically be more efficient as far as carrying those equipment to possible investigations.
Yeah, absolutely. What we're doing, the battalion chief vehicle is a shared vehicle. It's always on duty by the battalion chief for that shift, for that day. Responds five to eight calls a day, probably most of them emergency. So it's getting a lot of use. That vehicle right now has got about 56,000 miles on it. While it may not sound like a lot, it's an '07. Those are hard miles, going from a cold start to lights and sirens right away. So to me, that, the priority is making sure that vehicle is in good condition and safe. The fire marshal vehicle itself is currently using two vehicles. One via vehicle, it's an Impala, that he uses for his day-to-day appointments, inspections, and things. When he has a fire investigation scene to do, we have what we call the FIS vehicle. It's the Black and White DeConaline van that has 238,000 miles on it. But our plan is to combine him into one vehicle, which would be a Suburban, which is the current reserve battalion chief vehicle. It's got 25,000 miles on it. It's in very nice shape, and it will hold all of his equipment and do everything we need to do with that, so.
All right. Oh, yeah, thanks, chief. I guess I was just concerned, because as you know, firefighters are pretty popular here in the city, and, you know, every dollar counts, considering going forward, especially when we're discussing closing down two stations. And it appears that this purchase is logistically important to keep current firefighters safe and protect property.
Yeah, I'm very aware of the perception of it. It's just unfortunate, but it's one of the items that we do need to replace, and we have an opportunity to do that at this time, so.
Thank you, chief. I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead. You're in order here. Move for adoption?
Yes.
And support. Is there any other comments? Are there any other discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Our next item is number 14. Approve a purchase order to J's Septic Service for $1,340 for eight annual portable toilet services for fiscal year 2015. In pending approval of the fiscal year 2016 and 2017 budgets, accept the bid from J's Septic Service for $4,840 each year for the same services. Councilman Tibbs.
I'm a maintenance council member this evening.
Nope, that's fine. I'm sure your question's going to be the same I had earlier today.
Again, I thanks city staff and the city manager for getting back to me with the emails about the question I had related. I just, two questions. J's Septic, did we, have we used them previously?
No, I believe the earlier was Johnny on the spot. When we rebid it, the prices went up, and we've changed, we've since changed vendors this year.
Okay.
So this will be the first time using J's.
I guess I have no further question. As far as you responded to my email, as far as, I guess there might have been some concerns as far as upkeep, previous, I mean, maybe even before Jade, or before Johnny at the spot, but it appears that you're on top of as far as.
Yeah, I mean, we've had some issues with tipping or whatever, you know, but the basic service for this is, it's twice weekly cleaning. So there's eight of them, and it's for six months, May through October. But their cleaning's supposed to be not only to clean out the toilet itself, but to also wipe down the inside of the toilet. But depending on, and what we try to do mostly is get it cleaned like on a Friday, a Thursday or a Friday, and then a Monday following the weekend, when most of the youth might be through the weekend. So that's the twice cleaning. But if they get there on a Friday and something happens to it over the weekend, you know, they won't be able to get to it to clean it till that second cleaning in that week, so.
Just that, our parks are pretty important to our city, and, you know, without an adequate, I guess, staff to, for upkeep, it's somewhat important, and I appreciate you getting back to me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
Okay, so it's 1340 for the eight for fiscal year, this fiscal year.
Because it's just May and June.
Oh.
It's two months.
Two months.
Yep.
Okay, that answers a question as to why it goes up.
And then the next two fiscals, it'll be for the full six months.
Okay.
That was my question, too.
Okay. Can you name the parks that those are all?
Yeah, they're in the, right on the CC there, Councilmen, but Bliss Park, Celebration Square, and we do have the two restroom facilities, both, there's actually three, men's, women's, and then there's a
Yeah, it's there.
A third one. But we, but we put one of these out for the skate park portion of it, because when we close the splash park down, we lock up the facilities, because there will no longer be men. But there is a heavy use at the skate park portion, so we set one out there for that. Crayola Park, the Lee Street Boat Launch, the Garber Tennis Court, Ojibwe Island, and Fordney Park. Now, the two at Fordney Park are owned by the city. They were put in when we did them park improvements years ago, and they're two ADA-accessible porta-johns, but they're owned by the city, but we still contract out the servicing of them.
And due to the fact that we're having work done here on the men's bathroom during that period of time, are you going to?
No, 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 I don't. I think we got two other facilities here within the building. I don't know how well that would go over. I could talk to the manager about that, though.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman Fitzpatrick.
So does that include, you said Ojibwe?
Yep.
So we just have a porta-john? What happened to our restrooms?
Well, they're still out there, but they're not open throughout the day normally for the rental of the island because of vandalism and potential damage. So when we do rent the island, we give a key for use of the facilities, but we just can't keep them open 24 hours. So we do put one out there for people who are out there when the facilities aren't available.
So there is a porta-john?
For the walkers and everything else.
There's a porta-john out there right now?
Should be, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Michael Ballz.
Question about Wicks Park. Are we going to, just going to let that die? What are we doing at Wicks Park?
As far as?
I mean, is they, they maintenance? I mean, it don't, the road?
That's not the I don't mean to interrupt you, but we have a motion, and we're talking about item number 14.
Okay, all right. That'll work.
Okay. Thank you.
That's fine. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Phil, I'm just a little confused in regards to your answer to Councilman Fitzpatrick. The first price is for two months.
Yep.
May and June of this year. You said the next two are for annual, for six months.
Yep.
For the, now, so it'd be three months this year, then three months next year?
No, it'll be, for the, to finish the fiscal 15, which ends July 1st, we have to cover May, which we just gone through, and then June.
Right. That's the 1,300. I got that.
And then for the, yep, for the next fiscal, it'll be a full six months. Will be the remainder of this, this year for, which will be July, August, September, October, and then it'll be May and June of next.
Four and two.
So it covers two calendar years, one fiscal.
All right. That's just that.
And the reason this is happening this way is our current contract expired in October of '14. So otherwise, these first two months we're into now would have been figured into last year's budget.
All right. That makes, that makes sense now. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Move for adoption? And support? Is there any other discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, that takes you to your next order of business of reports from boards, commissions, and committees, and appointment of board and commission members.
Is there any reports from any of the boards? Any reports, council members, a verbal report? We have received in our packet a number of minutes from different boards, and we appreciate those coming in all the time. And thank you to all the boards and members for bringing those in with us. We certainly appreciate that. So we go to appointments, then, if there's no reports?
Yes, and we do have one this evening. It is approval of the Merrill reappointment of Michael Hanley to the Saginaw Economic Development Commission with a term to expire June 30th, 2018.
So I need a motion to approve?
No move.
And supported. Is there any other further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, your next item of business is introduction of ordinances. Our first one, as I mentioned earlier prior to the meeting and the announcements, we do have the revised ordinance that's been placed in front of you. Is it ordinance to amend Section 110.23 Palm Brokers of Chapter 110, General Provisions one-ten, general provisions of Title eleven Business Regulations.
Need a motion to introduce?
No move.
It's been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, and this will be, uh, held, laid over, uh, under our charter provisions. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, second ordinance again has a revised, uh, ordinance out here. It's an ordinance to amend chapter one-ten, point twenty-five, Secondhand Merchants, Chapter of one-ten, General Provisions of Title eleven Business Regulations.
Need a motion to introduce?
No move, support.
Been moved and supported, is there any further discussion on this motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, this ordinance is laid over under the charter provisions. Madam Clerk.
Our third ordinance is a new ordinance to add section one-ten thirty-five, precious, precious item dealers of Chapter one-ten, General Provisions of Title eleven Business Regulations.
Need a motion to introduce?
No move.
Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, ordinance will be, uh, laid over under the charter provisions. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we are at consideration of passing of ordinances. The ordinance is to amend chapter sixteen, title Police Officers and Firefighters Retirement System. The specific sections are titled Retirement System Continued, Board of Trustees, and Management of Funds.
We need a motion to adopt.
No move.
Been moved and supported, is there any further discussion?
I will get a copy of this order.
If you'd like a copy, you should have a copy of that.
Oh, I love it.
You should have, if you have a copy of that.
Okay.
It was presented last, uh, council meeting and laid over for this council.
That's right, that's right, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You're right.
Good question.
Any other further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, we are now at resolutions, and we have one this evening, is to support the two thousand fifteen Light Up The City Initiative.
Need a motion to approve?
No move, support.
Been moved and supported, is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
We are now at motions and miscellaneous business.
I have just a, a comment here I did not get a chance earlier to make, uh, but I would. Uh, recently, I went over and cut a vacant lot in my neighborhood, uh, at the corner of, um, Congress Court B, and, excuse me?
Picture of you cutting grass, sir?
No, sir. But I, I, I cut this corner over there believing that this was a land bank, a lot, and I know that they have a hard time getting to them, plus, uh, they would only cut portions of that. Lo and behold, after I cut this lot, I noticed grass was coming up and not clover. So the old light went on, consumers' light went on. Checking with the city, this is privately owned. I cut a lot that's privately owned by someone else. Um, and, of course, I, I, I got the information from the office, uh, of Alliance Real Estate Group. Um, Alliance Real Estate Group, L L C, they're located at thirty-twenty Davenport, owns this lot, and I want you to know that I went over there, I talked to them, within five days, that lot has been cut and taken care of, and will be taken care of on a weekly basis from this point on. And, and I just wanna give kudos to those that take care of the lots. I mean, they, that, there was a house burned, uh, uh, and insurance settlement, the house was taken down, they have that, and they are taking care of that lot, as well as many others, uh, they gave me a list in the city of Saginaw they cut, so there, I, I just wanna give kudos out to the good ones, 'cause we hear, we know about the bad ones, but boy, there's so many good ones out there, and, uh, so, uh, yes, I do have an opportunity now to cut another lot if I need be, but, uh, um, I, I, I will do that. One of the problems I'm having, and I don't know, uh, I am ready, I am ready to hire a high school student or junior high to cut my grass. I can't find any. I found them, I found them, I found them, and I will pay them above minimum wage, I will pay them, but they don't wanna work.
What are you paying?
They don't wanna work, and they don't wanna show up on a regular basis. And, and it's too bad, because it's just not, it's just not taught anymore, as you're teaching your big brother, the importance of reliability and stuff, so, um, I, I'm hoping to find some in the future. I, I stop kids walking home from Thompson Middle School. Are you interested in a summer, part-time job cutting grass? Nope. It's okay, so anyways, uh, um, so, I, we're, we're, so, uh, something, uh, you, go ahead.
I have one quick, I don't know if it's protocol, but we have a young man in the audience who is new to our area, who is moving to Saginaw.
We do.
From Sardisco Magic. I invited him, and he actually came, and I'd like to acknowledge the young man, all the way from the southern states, he has now come to Saginaw. And he is getting, he is going to be living.
He lives in the city.
In the city.
He lives in the, thank you very much. Thank you. Anything else? Go ahead, now you're gonna, now you're gonna...